It kind of like sets the table for what's going on in the community or what's been happening in the last five, 10, 15 years. So you can start to analyze trends. Whether it's like a spike in growth or, you know, there's some regional concerns. And it helps you to plan for the future, like hey, our population's growing in this one area. We don't want that. We should change our ordinance accordingly. So we use the stool for a master plan. That's what works at our office. So there's really three sections. It's the inventory chapters and sections, where I was just talking about. Where we're going is vision statement and future land use plan, if things are gonna change. And then the most important part, in my opinion, is goals, policies, strategies, implementation, which is, you know, if you're gonna do the plan, you might as well make it usable and have actionable items that, you know, it's not just gonna sit on a shelf and say, hey, we did it. There's actually like things that that give the town homework to do and to update things, such as site plan standards, which I'm sure you're familiar with in subdivision, if things aren't working. So the master plan provides broad, high-level guidance, like I said, common framework. It's not the plan of all plans. Doesn't presume new opportunities or challenges won't arise. And it's just a touchstone to really receive guidance from if the town's looking for that. Some benefits before we jump into your plan. You know, you can update your zoning ordinance, your zoning ordinance, or all your land use ordinances are based on your master plan. So they, it's like the blueprint or guidance for your regulations. So they have to be consistent. First state statute. Also to implement innovative land use controls. Such as, sounds like you have cluster standards, so that's good. Other communities use impact fees for large developments, et cetera. And then for the community, like I think a lot of people do like a plan update. They get to have their voices heard. They get to complain a lot. You know, they they get to engage and provide input for their future. So I think that's a part of this project that a lot of people enjoy who, you know, participate in these sorts of things. So I did look through the plan as much as I could and tell me if this is wrong, please do say so. It looks like it was adopted in 2002, updated in 2010. Appears you guys did some online surveys, completed the land use, housing, transportation, utilities, recreation and conservation sections with some additional appendices. I thought the scenic vistas part was pretty cool, actually, since that's such an important part of Madison. And then I guess for, to kind of touch on the beginning, Paul, is, you know, how has the community changed in the last 24 years at this point? What are the most important issues that needs to be addressed in the plan? And is the current zoning serving the community well? Based on our brief discussion, it sounds like it is. So I'm not, you know, I'm not here to say that you like need to update your plan. But just some things to consider about your current plan when you think about doing it. Some towns do work on the plans themselves. It takes a lot longer. To get these inventory chapters updated is a pretty big task. A lot of time spent mining census data and New Hampshire state housing data. So we do help communities do that. Our quickest, our record plan update was 15 months. The longest has been three years. So it really depends on the community. Sometimes communities put a timeout. They're like, we don't, we're gonna just take a breather. In some communities, you know, I think Conway just updated theirs in like 14 months. So you can get through it, but I would say at least a year to do it well is what I would expect.
If I may ask, did they have a committee of of community members along with planning board members too?
Yeah, usually there's like a master plan committee in Conway. I'm just familiar with it because I was there when they started the process.
I mean, I was in, I was on the board in 2010 when those surveys came out. And I I just, for the life of me, I can't remember who wrote all the questions for the surveys. But I do believe it was a committee of community members and planning board members. And I thought that that was, that played an important role for what we did going forward. I don't know if there's enough of that, my feeling. And I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but I don't know if there's enough of that, community participation and participation with other boards to try to create a vision. I mean, I know, we all know there's some friction between some boards here in town and stuff. And it might be good to have members of different communities to to get on, aboard with this. Just don't wanna get, my feeling is that something might happen in the future and we're not ready for it because.
I think also, Carl, if I remember rightly, the last time we updated this, we invited all department heads to come in and give their input to this. And I think that would be an important part of to do that, not just as a public. I think a public input, and I think we need input.
That would be maybe a first step to to look into establishing that, to see what the the feeling is there, to see how far they think we should take this.
Right. And I think if if everyone has a, you know, a dog in the fight there, we could all kind of get moving in the right, right direction.
That should be something we should discuss amongst ourselves is the, which way we think we should, you know, take it and handle it.
Absolutely. I think we gotta kind of set a roadmap of what we're looking to do. Are we looking to just simply update demographics? Are we looking to actually go so far as to update the entire master plan? I mean, I've pretty openly said it before, but I just find it as a taxpayer very hard to swallow to be spending tens of thousands of dollars on this when we've got, you know, all kinds of failing infrastructure.
That's the biggest question. If we're gonna do the whole plan, what what are we talking money-wise if we do the entire plan? It's hard for me to give a number. We've done a few for 50,000 and some for like 207, like it depends on the effort.
It's a tough.
Right.
But I would say for, it it depends, you know, we have to come agree on a scope and timeline and blah, blah, blah. But I would say, you know, about 40 or 50 would make it.
That's like the starting point, basically.
Yeah, that's like the, alright, we're just gonna do this work, we're gonna have a workshop at the beginning and do a survey and then have a workshop at the end. It wouldn't be any more engagement than that. In in bigger towns, we do like a housing workshop and a future land use. And it's like this big thing. I'm not really feeling that Madison wants to do that or is, you know, large enough to do that kind of stuff. But it, there's a, there's a range of how much it could cost. Yeah, that's, but it's hard, I can't just give a number.
No, I get you.
Yeah, and I agree with David too. There needs to be a roadmap. So, I mean, often we, as boards or when boards get together, we get way sidetracked. So to have a roadmap to.
To follow.
Maybe a committee to make sure that we stay on task. That might help. I would hope it would, you know?
I I just, I hate to say it, at 40 or 50,000, I mean, I don't know how much the master plan being updated. And I I'm sure that that's, you know, a very realistic number. There's quite a bit of time that needs to go into that master plan update.
Yeah, if we're gonna do it, we're gonna.
You do it right. You're gonna do it right. I I a hundred, personally, a hundred percent. If you're gonna spend money on something, you do it right the first time. You don't, you know, you don't throw a half, half concerted effort at it. So, but the concern that I have is personally is is that I just, boy, 40 or 50,000 dollars when we're only spending 200,000 a year on roads, I don't, isn't even 200, I don't even know now.
250.
250. Oh, wow, we're up to 250. But I mean.
We shouldn't cover that much because.
It doesn't cover, it doesn't cover much at all. And so that's, that's where my concern is, is that, you know, I I really, I think that our tax money could be spent a lot better. Because we're not, I, the master plan, I don't think you're gonna see a big change for that 40 or 50,000 dollars and not seeing a big change for that. And that's my concern. That's, I've said that right along and.
I I agree with you too, but if there were some points, you know, didn't cost 50,000 dollars that we could touch on, you know, that would, or things that the board could take on on their own, no.
And that would be a first.
Oh, yeah.
It's just money's tight everywhere and when you, I mean, everyone looks at their taxes, it's like, holy cow, you know? And then you add another 50,000 dollars to our budget. It's a tough pill to swallow, for sure.
Yeah, one approach that we've done in a town called Bristol, Maine, which is like, I don't know if you know like Damroskata or, it's a small town on the coast. They reached out, they tried doing the plan themselves. And I think they got frustrated after a few years and they just hired us to just just do the inventory chapters. And then we like finished the reports, gave it to them, and then they ran with it. And then they actually ended up calling us again for more help. That's something that we do as well, is just to write the reports and hand them off. But I think the community, if you're gonna do the plan, I would say like engaging the community is the most important thing. Just so it doesn't seem like, you know, just you all are doing it and perception can be, can go a long way sometimes.
Absolutely.
And if we're looking at it that the, that the board here is gonna try to not tackle the whole thing, but look at it to, you know, start a roadmap and and to look at things, I guess the question would be for you is, what would you recommend us looking at and to do just to, just to start a process? Because I have, I was no idea when that was done. I don't know if you were involved or Kyle, when they did it back in 2010.
I wasn't.
It's a, it's, it's new to us and I've never worked on one before. So I think that's what we're, the gist of conversation that we've had in the past is is looking, you know, for your expertise to look at it and say, okay, this is what I I look at, looking at Madison. Here's the, here's the, maybe the the road to start on.
I I think I would have to dive into the inventory chapters before answering that. But I would suggest updating those, like bare minimum, just so they reflect 2024 or 2025. Even if it's just changing the numbers and making new charts that will at least show that what's going on today. You know, 2010 was quite a while ago. There's been some, you know, economic successes and challenges since then. I'm not super ingrained in Madison, so I don't know, like, if there's been 200 more houses since then or however many more residents. But I know up the valley has changed a lot since 2010. So I would do that. And I think, you know, a community survey with five questions, like what's your favorite part about Madison? Or what are the places in Madison that you avoid? Or a housing question would be good. I'd say some like visioning, trying to gain some energy from people's opinions. And then take that, analyze that's that stuff and maybe create like a new vision statement for the town. And maybe it doesn't change. It just, that's, that's where I would start would be the inventories, some sort of engagement. And and I don't even know if that's like gonna become a master plan because there are requirements. So I would follow the RSAs and do the two sections at least. That's where I would start. There's also a state, there's a planner who works in the state, for the state, who Noah Hodges, Hodges? Who could also help.
Noah Hodges?
Noah, yeah, he's the principal planner for the state and he's a really, really smart guy. And I'm sure he has some, some guidance as well. That's what I would recommend. Again, these questions are a good starting point. And if they're, you know, how does the community change? If it hasn't, then maybe you don't need to plan then. But I think checking in every, you know, on the agenda, like every year to like, do, how's the master plan? Or do we want, you know, I think it's a good thing to keep thinking about. Or if you're reviewing a site plan project and you're like, this regulation is awful, like where, how do we change that, you know?
Come across that so often.
That kind of thing. That's something that the master plan can help guide to a different place, whether you're, you know, like lawn size or whatever.
And that's what you've seen in other communities.
Yeah. The the master plan is really like the blueprint for the community. So all the, all the ordinances, regulations have to, are guided by that. It can't be, you know, the master plan can't say something like, there shall be no growth and blah, blah, blah zone. But that zoning ordinance allows like unlimited growth, like that, that can't happen. And maybe yours is consistent and it's fine. But yeah, I think getting a committee together, whether it's you all or different groups of people, like a volunteer committee and kind of see where folks are and if they have energy to pursue this.
And I think now, I I remember we were kind of disappointed with some of the, the numbers and the responses in 2010. But it's so much easier to to contact people now and get responses. I think a survey is a great idea, as long as it's, you know.
Not too long.
Not, yeah, not too broad, you know?
I guess my, my question at the moment, and I have missed a couple of meetings, so I probably missed some of this. And if I'm in here, I've probably forgotten it too. So, but exactly how did we get to this point? I mean, there seems to be some reluctance here anyway to address this master plan. How did we get to the point that we were addressing the master plan?
It was a pretty even split, as I recall, of people that were interested in looking into it and people that were more looking to keep status quo. And I'm one of the ones that would prefer to keep status quo, but I'm always open to hearing about it. So I believe I proposed, I might have been the one. I don't know if I proposed that or if I. I know that Kate came up with the idea initially and I believe I made the motion.
Put it to mass.
Yep. I I I'm open to considering it.
Because it's, because it's been a, a while.
Because it's been a while.
It's just that it's, there's missing pages.
Yeah, that's what it, yeah, right, there was some missing page, things like that.
It's just, I don't know who did it.
It's, it's the cost benefit, and cost benefit analysis is what I, that's how I'm looking at this. And if we were gonna have a monstrous benefit for the town, I wouldn't be opposed to spending hundreds of thousands of dollars if it was gonna really help the town and, you know, help us out and do a lot of great things. I'm concerned that that it's gonna have a limited amount of benefit to the town for the cost. That's what my concern is.
Yeah, I agree. I, I just wish there was somebody we could try to get some information without having to spend, you know, an absurd amount of of money.
It's money or time.
Do you guys have a relationship with your regional planning agency at all? No?
That's the way you're gonna look at it. It's money or time. It's either that we we hire someone to do it or we have a bunch of volunteers do it and.
I'm hesitant to believe that you're gonna get a group of volunteers to actually get anything.
They're gonna function. I agree.
It sucks to say that, but.
It's true.
It's the truth.
Yep.
I mean, you're right. I mean, look at our boards right now.
I'd, I'd love to help, but I'm stretched pretty thin right now. There's no chance that I can spend any extra time.
So I feel like if we're gonna do it, we have to spend the money. We just need to make the decision as to whether or not it's worth spending the money.
Yep.
I don't think that, not that a committee is a bad idea, but good luck.
A committee of volunteers, I mean, why not? The worst part about it, give it a try if it's not gonna cost us. If it's gonna save the town money, that, that might get more people involved, saying, hey, if we can get this, you know, if we could sell it to people as a way to save money, but to also have a, you know, like what you said, like have a vision for the town going forward, you might get some of the younger families that buy into this, that, you know?
Well, it's, it's hard to say younger families. I think most people that are moving up here are older. They're retiring, living up here. And they're not, they're not getting involved. I mean, example of it is myself. I retired, I moved up here. I was on boards in the town I moved from, and that's why I wanted to come and continue on here. But other people that have not been involved and stuff, it's gonna be difficult to try to get them to to come forward.
Well, I mean, I agree. I was young when I moved here. I'm not so young anymore. But look at Adam over here. He's pretty young and he's got a young family and, you know, the. When other boards talk, they talk about their vision of the town was getting young families, right? To move into some of these. You know, this is a chance maybe for for people to make, to have the opportunity to push that vision or not. Right? There, there's gotta be a way to go. We, I, I don't know. I mean, you can't sugarcoat it. There's not a good feeling in town, in town members and boards and stuff, right? There's, this is a chance maybe to get people together and and sort of create a vision. Maybe we can do it without money. I'm with David. If it's gonna cost, if it's gonna cost a ton of money, we can't afford it. Right? But if we can get some people together and I don't, I don't have the answer. This is just one person's opinion on it. But I, I, I'd rather try to see people get together than keep being divisive as it is right now. Because what's gonna happen? There's gonna be no vision.
I, I think that it's very important to get public input and and get, if if we go forward with this, we do something with that. And I think that one of the first steps, I don't know how to look, but might even say, alright, we're looking at a range of so many dollars. Is this something the public wants the town to pursue to spend or not? And then if it is, then we ask for public input, have a public hearing, build a roadmap and step forward. If it's not, then it's dead in the water. And I mean, I just, I don't think you're gonna get a group of people to come in and write this. I think that the.
No.
The complexity and the severity of putting it together, and volunteers are great, a poor point.
I don't think they're asking us to do that. I think just to get some direction on it and which way to move forward. Would you agree, Jamal?
So it sounds like.
Yeah. So like a non-binding warrant article, something that we would put forth on the warrant, like asking for people's opinion on it, you know? Would you support an update to the master plan that will cost somewhere in this range?
Yes, David, it would be nice if we could put out a questionnaire and get an answer to that even before the meeting. But I'm not sure we'd get an easy way to do that. So.
You're right, you don't want it dead in the water, like you said, you know?
What's that, Carl?
You're right, you don't want it dead in the water from the beginning of people who don't want.
Well, if people are interested in it, then no, we don't. But I mean, it's something that, we're not even sure as a whole board, we wanna pursue this, right? So, you know, we can't sit here and say tonight, I don't think conclusively between all of us, that this is what we wanna do. But I think that the the public does deserve a say somehow, somewhere.
Yeah, most definitely.
And that's what we're here for, is to serve the public.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay.
I have said my too much. I'll be ahead.
Well, thanks for having me.
I appreciate you, you coming in and sharing with us.
I think Sean got us connected, so.
Your information, but hopefully we can come back to you someday and.
Yeah.
And 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 to expand some more on this. But I think we have to take some small steps right now.
Yep.
To determine what our plan is gonna be and what we have to do.
Yeah, so feel free to get in touch. We'll, we'll be here. So.
Okay.
We are interested in helping you in any way we can. Also, just pick up the phone and call. We can chat and it'll be free. So. We're having to. What's that?
I like free.
Not free for everybody. Once we, you know, once we engage.
I'm sure we, we will be doing that with the questions that come up.
Yeah.
With us trying to get a direction here.
Yeah, just look this up online. Kate has my info here. Yeah, thanks. And I guess good luck. And it's definitely a worthy cause if you wanna do it. Takes a lot of energy though. So it's not an easy, it's not an easy task.
It's not an easy task. And I can see that a town like Madison versus the Conways, it's definitely a, something that they have to do. Madison, it's kind of.
I will say that they hadn't done, done it since 2002. So it had been a while. And I got there and was like, what is going on with this?
Quite a bit of changes from 2012 to today.
Yeah, I mean, so much. So that's what triggered it up there. They followed through with it and it's, it's good. Hopefully they utilize it going forward. So.
Yeah, that's the other thing. To spend all that money to utilize it, you have to use it moving forward.
Yes, sometimes you work with communities, not things we have here, but the first step is like redo our whole zoning ordinance. And that's like another big project before there's really any change, you know? Because the master plan doesn't change regulations. It just tells you what you should change.
Yeah, and I think we've, we've done that as we come up against some situations, the zoning has changed. We've recommended changes and.
Good.
Try to keep up with it that way.
Yeah, it's challenging sometimes. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have any old business to discuss? I was gonna say old business before we did the public comment. If there's nothing to discuss, we'll open public comment. Is there any public comment?
Hi, good evening. Hi, my name is Mark Graffum.
Hey, Mark.
I've lived in the town of Madison for about 47 years. And I was actually the chairman of this board back in the late 90s. And I went around to start Madison TV with Jim Malloy. Remember Jim Malloy? So I have a little background here. The reason I came tonight was, I live in Iowas since 1978. And recently, it's become clear that we have a problem with camping. We've had the police have to come to one of the lots in the fight apartment a couple of times where people bought a lot and decided to start clearing it by hand and living on it. And they had no utilities, there's obviously no septic, no water. And they were lighting bonfires, not campfires, but bonfires every night. And they had trucks that were disabled with tires off them, jacked up with windows missing, with plastic over it. And just, I guess, to say it's an eyesore would, that's a, in the eye of the beholder. But a lot of people would be coming upset. Got to the point that the house next door, which was owned by a realtor in Bull, for 10 years, sold the house next to this lot at the end of last year. And the new owner ended up having to buy this lot for a large increase over what the campers bought it for. We'll, we'll use the word campers for the owners at that time, like a lot of money more. And I heard somebody comment, there was actually a movie made about a scam where you buy a property and then just force the buyer to buy it at an extortion price. So there's, there's a lot of conversation and emotion in Iowas about what happened to the zoning ordinance. The Iowas zone used to have, it stated that there's no camping. And a few years ago, that disappeared. So I thought I'd come tonight and ask if anybody has any. And a few years ago that disappeared. So I thought I'd come tonight and ask if anybody has any remembrance of how that changed. Because it's, there's a section in the Madison zoning where documents changed that were made over the years, but that wasn't one of them. And I did a search on the Madison ordinance, just, uh, just the word, the letters C A M P. And it only appears three times under a search, using the search engine on, of, of a PDF document. And it's mostly related to ADUs, where you can't use camper, camping type, vehicles or such, or camps to have an auxiliary, an alternate dwelling unit. Other than that, it's not in the Madison ordinances that I could find. So I, I wanted to start a project that fixed that at least in the Idahois ordinances. And as I'm looking through them, I see a lot of other things that could change, so. I guess, I was here when the master plan was done, when you were talking about it, and, um, I wasn't on the board at the time. But I think I was running Madison TV at the time that it was. And, um, I guess I'm starting a master plan for Idahois. And it's an elephant, and the way you eat an elephant is one bite at a time, so I'm gonna start with camping. So I wanted to get an idea of how not to impact anybody's time and particularly Kate's time by putting effort into having something for the warrant next year to fix parts of Idahois zones ordinances. So I thought starting in June is probably a late start, but not, not the very last minute.
Better than December.
Not a panic right now. So there's time to get some work done. And I'm gonna be looking at, people seem to wanna form a committee within Idahois to do things like this, which is encouraging, I guess. It takes, it takes something upsetting maybe to get people to pay attention. They have to have a personal interest in it. So one of the things, just, so that, that's why I'm here tonight is to introduce myself, say that I wanna work on this, give you an idea. I know the deadlines of when a proposed ordinance has to be voted by this board, which I believe it used to go into effect right away if the board votes a proposed ordinance in place and then is ratified. It either passes or fails at the annual meeting, and if it fails, then it, it goes away. But it's actually in effect when this board says they're gonna put it on the warrant. Is that still true?
I don't believe that.
No.
No.
I think if it's a zoning change, you have to bring it up and...
It's gonna be, it's gonna be approved by the town.
By the town.
Yeah.
Has to be.
I will clarify that, Linda, but I think that's true.
I think Mark is correct, actually, because I believe it's once we have the first public hearing and it passes a public hearing, it is grandfa- it, it, it starts that from there.
It's an effect.
It's an effect for any new cases that come before us from that point until town meeting. And then if it passes town meeting, it stays, and if it doesn't, then any cases that came in that interim time can be revisited if, if something has happened. That's, that's why it was explained to us for for one of the regulations that we just talked about recently. It was within the last three years we had something. The attorney, the attorney told us that.
There's nothing in the Idahois, uh, regulations about campers and...
It used to be that there was no camping. And I looked at, I checked out, I think it was three years ago that I checked it and it was there. And then I talked to Bob Boyd and he talked about it being removed. And I wondered if anybody knew who was in favor of that, how that all started to remove that, because...
Was that specific to Idahois, though?
It was in the Idahois zone, yes.
But specific to Idahois itself, they had it in their regulations? No camping? Is this what you're saying?
No. Idahois is a zone within the Madison zoning ordinance, so we don't do zoning.
Okay, so they didn't have any...
We're part of the town zoning.
Things specific, so.
We're zoned within the town.
It all means back to the town.
Right. We have ordinances that the board of commissioners can propose and have voted by the, um, by the voters of Idahois after hearings and such, just like the town does, but zoning is...
Have you pursued that there, that road to go down, to do it in Idahois specifically first?
It has to be part of the zoning.
Is it, I mean, so it's legal anywhere else in Madison?
It'd be a district ordinance rather than...
Like pull your fifth wheel on a lot while you're building it and live there, or is that, is that okay?
Well, then it gets in, I realize that the definition of camping can cover many things. It can, and the example is it can go all the way down to two kids pitching a pup tent in their own backyard and sleeping out with flashlights for the night. All the way to people in Idahois having purchased lots and not built the house, not gotten driveways approved, but bringing a bagel up a steep slope and to a clear, flat area and using that for years. And that takes investigating whether they got an occupancy permit. Is the town giving away, giving occupancy permits to houses that haven't had the driveways approved by Idahois, which is an ordinance? But not zoning. Camping is a zoning ordinance. So... This is, this is what I'm about to undertake. That's why I say this is not something that's gonna be easy and it's one bite at a time.
I, I think what Paul was trying to say, though, is maybe you could pursue it through Idahois. It doesn't necessarily have to be a zoning ordinance. It could be as Idahois district ordinance through your commissioners. Am I, am I correct? Is that what you were...
Yes.
Yeah, they could be.
Right.
Absolutely. Mark, I thought it was already a, a rule there.
So Mark, I, I did just go back through the, I don't know if you're familiar with the Wayback Machine? It's a website. You can look at old websites. Um, if you look up Wayback Machine on Google. Um, I'm back in twenty fifteen and I can't find anything relating to camp or camping or anything like that in the zoning ordinance in twenty fifteen. So we're at least back nine years. So I would be curious if, if something was deleted from the zoning. I'm, when you bring up that something was deleted from the zoning ordinance, and I personally wasn't, I've been here ten years and I haven't been present when we've deleted anything from the zoning ordinance relating to camping. So I'm very curious on if something was deleted while I was here anyways, I, I would be upset because I know that I didn't vote for that. So, um, if you're able to find that old ordinance, the Wayback Machine, you wouldn't believe how many times I use this. I've only looked up two of them so far for that, but I was able to find on the Wayback Machine old ordinances for the town, old versions of it. And the two that I found, neither one of them had the camping in there. So I am curious, cause I really, if, if stuff's being deleted from our zoning ordinance without the board's knowledge, that's something we need to address, absolutely, so.
I, I, I'm not sure that that's what happened, but I, I could talk to Bob Boyd about this again. I talked to him about it two years ago. Um, I'm curious as to why you would want this not to be a zoning ordinance? Why you're saying that Idahois should have a non-zoning ordinance?
No, we're saying, is it in, is it something that Idahois has already addressed? Uh, we're not saying we don't wanna see it as a zoning ordinance. I mean, if it's something that needs to be, um, added to the zoning...
There is no ordinance outside of zoning that talks about camping in, in Idahois. Because we look at...
Idahois, uh, any, if you do it as a zoning, it's gonna be town-wide.
No.
It wouldn't, it doesn't necessarily have to, because Idahois is a, is a separate zone.
The reason you call it zoning is that you can have zones, and we have zones. Idahois is twenty-two percent of the town.
Mm-hmm.
The town of Madison's, after you take away the exemption, has a valuation of five hundred and ninety-five million, one hundred and forty-three thousand, eight hundred and seventy-nine. Of that, one hundred and thirty-five million, three hundred and thirty-six thousand, two hundred and eighty is Idahois making up that portion. So it's about twenty-three percent of the entire town is Idahois. And that, in the, in the zoning ordinances, Idahois is its own zone. All of the Madison zoning ordinances apply to it, and then there's particular zoning ordinances that apply to that zone as it does to the village zone within the town itself. That's why I was asking why you seem, I thought you were saying pushing it out of the zoning back into Idahois for the commissioners to have as an ordinance and...
No, my question originally was just, had, has the Idahois commissioners thought about this and introduced this into their planning? And not to say it's, it couldn't be into the entire Madison planning.
Would it be less of an elephant if the commissioners did something on their own without taking on zoning ordinance?
I think what we wanna do is have the zone within the Madison zoning ordinances have everything that Idahois wants. I think that's the way the zoning works is the people within the zone advocate for what the zone is within the entire zoning ordinances of a town.
Yeah, okay.
And the state laws are all written that way and the handbooks on land use and all of that.
Mm-hmm, yeah, so.
So we don't wanna go the rule that we stop making our own zoning ordinances when we are part of the town, a big part of the town.
Understand, understand. There's nothing, you know, stopping you from, from doing this, coming up with a, a recommendation on this and bring it before the board. And we can look at it and, as Dave said, have a public hearing on it, hash it out, and that would be put forth, um, uh, end of the year for, uh, a vote by the town.
If I remember, there's, there's a deadline in the fall for things to have public hearings.
I presented, uh, I presented earlier this year that if we're gonna have any zoning changes, I suggested that we have any and all potential zoning changes be first being heard in the month of July so that we can be having public hearings in September.
You sound like you have experience in it.
Yes. I do not want to get into the same boat we've been in multiple times over the years, so I... That was my suggestion back in January, I think it was, was that if we're gonna have any zoning changes going forward, they need to come, if they're gonna go through the board, they need to come to us by July.
So I will try to hit that and I'll see whether you hit it. So in a general question, go ahead.
Currently in Idahois right now, if you had a big camper, could you just park it in your driveway? And is there rules against that or do, or don't they have to park there? Some campers have, where the, where the mailboxes are, isn't there, uh...
There are lots that have campers on them and have been using them maybe as second homes for years. And it, it, a lot of the people don't think that it should be that way. It's supposed to be a rural residential and as the zoning says, specifies the heights of houses and the foundations they can have and driveway permits and some people just think, well, that doesn't apply to me, I'm gonna turn this into a campground. Mark, there are people that are building very expensive houses in there now. I mean, it's really incredible the houses that they've compared to what they used to build, the second, low-cost second ski homes.
I mean, the reason I ask is I, I thought there was a, a, already a rule in place against it, I guess.
It should be. That's why I'm here.
Mark, what I, what I would, I'll tell you personally what I would support if you tried to look at it this way, because you mentioned about vehicles being up on blocks and stuff like that. Currently, the way that the Madison's, um, code enforcement officer is able to enforce is that you can have up to one unregistered, uninspected vehicle per lot. I would be in support of changing the ordinance to one, one uninspected vehicle per lot with a home on it. And if it's, if there's no home on the, on the lot, no uninspected vehicles on the lot, I would a hundred and fifty percent support that. I would be concerned with limiting property owner rights if we don't allow them to camp on the lot personally. That would be my per- I'm a big, these guys will all, they hear me say it all the time, a big property rights advocate. I would have concern with not allowing people to camp on a property that they own. But I would absolutely not want to see lots being turned into junkyards and people parking a, you know, decrepit vehicle there that is unregistered, uninspected, just sitting there rotting away. I'd hate to see that.
And prior it gets into, like to kindle a fire without a fire permit.
Well, you need a permit, absolutely.
I heard recently it's, it could be a twenty-five hundred dollar fine in the town.
That's a state law.
And these, these lots don't have water. They don't have wells on them and they can't put on a fire.
Well, they, they, in case you don't know, I'm part of the fire department too, so. There are ways around that in terms of still meeting the statutory requirements to be able to kindle a fire on that lot.
Pouring water and containers?
There's plenty, yeah, there's plenty of ways. I mean, I, I camp. I go out and camp all the time. And I don't have a garden hose with me usually when I'm out in the woods. I, again, I, I think that there's some reasonable ways to still try to curtail some of this, especially problem property owners, like having the uninspected vehicles and stuff like that. I think there's definitely ways to, to look at it.
So when I say the definition of camping can go from two kids in a pup tent to people doing what has upset people this year?
Yep.
Then there's points in between, like people have varying opinions that, uh, I own a lot, I wanna build my own house and I wanna camp while I'm building my house.
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, I don't know, can that, if everyone here is of the opinion that they wanna be able to do that anywhere in Madison because that's their, their values, can Idahois say, but the majority of people don't want it? I guess the answer is it goes in front of the vote of the town.
Correct.
And does the town care what the Idahois people want for themselves in their zone? I don't want that to happen in Madison, so I'm gonna vote no against it happening in Idahois?
I think that you're gonna have a lot of people that are gonna feel that way. I can tell you that I personally, I do site work as well. And I've personally done site work for at least two people I can think of right off the top of my head in the last five years that they built their own homes and they put campers on their homes, on their lots, and they camped there for a couple of years while they built their home behind the camper. Um, so I think that that is a, and I, I personally think that that's a, a value that I support for, you know, landowner property, you know, rights and stuff like that, is being able to do that. Because I bet you both of them, knowing the families, they probably couldn't have afforded to do it any other way. So that's, that's where my mindset is on it. But again, I, I don't wanna have pro- problem neighbors that are reducing values of other people's properties because I believe in property rights, but I also believe that the abutter has property rights as well. So they shouldn't be being impacted by that neighbor that decides to become a nuisance.
And there's the elephants.
Yep.
And the other thing to look at too is that, you know, you do something like that, you put time limits on it. You know, you have to, you know, start something, you have to complete it within a certain amount of time. It can't be there forever.
That's another thing that was in the zoning ordinances, that once you start a house, you have to complete it within a certain amount of time.
Two years.
And that's, that's not going on either. So that, so another, independent of this board, I, I don't know whether Madison has enough resources in zoning enforcement, whether Bob is overwhelmed by what is doing and enforcement is a hard thing to really accomplish here and how to address that elephant.
More money. Bob is a thousand percent overwhelmed, but... He's not gonna go look at somebody to help him and spending another seventy-five or a hundred thousand dollars a year. There's no taking any bites out of that elephant.
Could that be funded by increasing fees related to development? There's generally mention impact fees. We kind of have impact fees on the water system where to do a hookup, we charge ten thousand dollars to apply for a water hookup. That used to be, um, but then the cost of actually doing the hookup rose on us. That ate away at what we were collecting as an impact fee. But we weren't collecting the impact fee that we use to enhance the, to upgrade the water system, expand it and so forth. So that's a tricky thing too within the, within the state of New Hampshire is implementing impact fees. But boy, the way that we're develop, I don't know if the rest of Madison is continuing to develop like Idahois is, but nothing slowed down in Idahois as far as building. And, um, if we don't have the resources, that's another problem that we could fix. And I don't think it has to be on the taxpayer to do it. I think that's something that you could probably get people motivated to look at, with your opinion on impact fees. It's not an easy thing to implement, but...
I mean, I think it stifles development, sure. Um, I'm so, I'm always shocked at how many people pay the ten thousand dollar fee in Idahois, to be honest.
They, they pay it no problem.
I, I, I've, I've heard the, I've gotten the pushback before personally when, when I tell somebody that number and they're just like, I'm like, I'm sorry, that's part of the cost of building in Idahois.
In Madison, we're hooking up to the water?
Yep.
And then soaking up to the water mandatory in Idahois?
No.
No.
Okay.
We have, we have probably eighteen people that have wells. Some of them have wells because we've put moratoriums in place in the last thirty years and they didn't have a choice if they wanted to build. They would, through a time period of a couple of years, that you couldn't hook onto the water system.
I'll say that was my problem in Conway is that you, when you build in Conway and you're within reach of the water system, you don't have a choice. You cannot drill a well.
I didn't think you had a choice if the, and you'd have to have a big enough lot that you don't have your septic system impacted by the Walgreen system.
You're right, you have to have a, you have to have, you still have to pass state regulations.
Yeah, so you...
But, but you can do that, still. You don't have to, no.
I assure you, in the lot, new house, and you won't believe what the septic system is, the above-ground septic system is. I'll show you a new lot, new house and you won't believe where the septic system is, the above-ground septic system is to where the well is sticking out of the ground, like from me to you.
Oh, that's wrong again.
There's, there's a lot of things wrong, but I'm not here to put it all on this board, there was very specific things here. I really appreciate the answer that you got. I don't think that you guys are going to vote to put something on the warrant that you don't want to have happen.
Depends on how you write it.
Yeah, exactly, depends on the wording of it and, and what happens if you have a public hearing. That's why you have the public hearing to get input into it. You know, I think we're, we're open to, to look at it with you and, and see what comes out.
A public hearing and see what the public says.
Okay. Maybe I can run versions by you without taking a lot of your time? Instead of showing up and saying, let's throw the dice and see if it's in or out.
Well, I would think that you could do that, sure, and send it in, we can take a look at it, discuss it at a meeting and go from there.
Thanks for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Marsha McKenna, I just really want to encourage you to take a look at the master plan. I feel that it's important to be proactive and not reactive, that for you to just look at it, go section by section, don't overwhelm yourself with all the ins and outs of it, but really take a close look at it. And just from the discussion with Mark and thinking back that it wasn't that long ago that Carroll County was the fastest-growing county in the state and Madison was one of the top towns as far as development. Because I was on conservation commission, that was one of the things we discussed. So I think you can make a blanket statement that there's not a lot of development in Madison since that master plan was written because I think there has been a substantial amount of growth in Madison since 2010. I also think that possibly you could approach each of the boards and see if somebody would volunteer from there, which would give you a core group for your committee to tackle this. I mean, it's not, it's a commitment and it's not a quick fix as we all know. But I just think it's important to at least open it up to the committees on the town to take part in this because this is important for the future of the town and the direction that it goes. The, even the New Hampshire planner that this gentleman mentioned may have a template or something that would work, go section by section so that it might take some of the unknown about how to approach a new master plan, may give you a, or whatever the committee would be, a guideline to work from which would simplify things, you know, somewhat. But I really, having been in town almost 50 years, I, I feel that if you can be proactive and anticipate some of the problems and address them sooner rather than later, then at least you're that much ahead of the game when it comes up against it in a meeting or a development. And thinking about workforce housing, I know we thought of Banfield Hollow as workforce housing, but I don't think that's really accurate. I know I'm a retired teacher, but I've heard some of my friends who work for the state in education and that they, towns can hire teachers, but the teachers can't find any place to live that they can afford within an hour of the school. So it's getting, and I know that even for in North Conway, trying to find people to work in the shops, I mean, we're talking minimum wage situations that we don't really have any workforce housing in, in Madison that I would... And whether or not we want that, I don't know. The state at one point seemed to indicate that every town had to provide workforce housing. So that might be something in a master plan that could be looked at or an area addressed or just think about where that might be if, if it comes to that.
But workforce housing, I, I personally was on the Habitat group. And we, the last two years, we completed two houses in that, in Idahoic. And it would be considered workforce housing. And that's what they're looking to continue with, whether it's in Madison. There's places in Conway, there's places in Albany and they're looking for the area, not specifically just Madison, but...
Those Bluebird ladies too, I think we're trying, that is an organization that we're trying to do that.
And Habitat pays the $10,000 hookup fee like that and has the additional taxes, which, which I don't get.
I would say, just also on, on Banfield Hollow, it, it started out as workforce housing. The pricing was there. Unfortunately, market values are what have made what was workforce housing not workforce housing. And it's not anything that, I don't believe, anything that us as a planning board could ever control is what market values have done. I mean, I agree with you, there is, there is no affordable housing anywhere in this valley at this point. Even the affordable housing that's just been built in Conway is already exorbitant, so.
And I really feel it's such a shame for, I mean, I've had my time, but for young families coming up or young people trying to get a start, it's just really must be incredibly discouraging. But, and then if Bob is overwhelmed, there must be a lot of, of building and, and projects going on. So those are the kinds of things I think you should have some look at in a master plan. And maybe the way it's written, it's fine, but I just would like to know that, and you could at least say it was reviewed in 2024, even if you don't make any changes, at least you've looked at it. But I, I think there might be a movement in the town and among the board, different boards that they might volunteer and that might be a place to check out and see if there is any chance that we can do it.
Good.
But thank you for looking at it.
Thank you for your input.
Is the master plan only in hot copy, is that what you're saying?
No, it's online, we just updated, we just updated 1.3B.
It's on the website?
Yep.
Great.
Under zoning board, it's all, the website's in the app, so just go into the top, I'd have to show you. I can do it, my hands go there.
The cost of building materials, what do you say, tough to build a workforce housing, you know?
I don't know what the answer is.
Okay. Well, thank you for your input. Moving on, all business. Any all business? Come before the board. Chairman's report, Mark is not here for a report. Selectment's report, Adam?
Nothing to report unless there's something you'd like to ask.
I don't think so, there's a, we talked about it last meeting, there was a couple of things, the Danforth, is that pretty much dead in the water?
They...
We're still...
On, no, no, I, I'm Tony Ford and...
Yeah.
There is a, a hearing on the 6th, which is tomorrow.
But that is for the zoning board.
The zoning board, from Danforth?
Yeah, yes, they're trying to get the case dismissed.
The what?
They're trying to get the case dismissed, our attorney is trying to get the case dismissed on that.
So the, I believe we talked about it last time, the verdict for that case was in the favor of the BOS at the time and now they've moved on to challenging the zoning board.
The zoning board.
Yeah, we were at stay until the decision came, Mark, don't believe I have a copy of that for you. I have an extra one, I need one, go ahead.
Thank you.
You're welcome. The zoning board was at stay pending on the board's weapons. And now theirs is done and now it's our turn and I think they're going to, I think the plaintiff is going to dismiss it, but we are not sure, it's going to have stats conference tomorrow. So I'll know better when I hear from our attorney on that.
Okay.
So we're kind of standstill, but hopefully it goes that way.
And I had something I got from somebody in email and my computer wasn't working tonight, so I couldn't print it. But I had something on STIs that I was going to pass over to the selectmen.
You're going to order it to me tomorrow and I can...
I will wait anxiously.
If I get it working, if I get it working, yes, I can.
I anxiously await it.
Just some information on what somebody in Des Moines has done.
Yep. No, I mean, I love to look at the new information, I mean, we're in it. The more knowledge we have, the better.
Okay. Correspondence, administration.
So I drafted that something, I put something in writing for a column in the letter. I didn't, I gave you all a copy of it, if you wanted to make changes, it's free, I don't know. I just pulled something together and pulled some dates together, I gave them, you know, at least a month's notice and...
I'll have to wait to hear back from them. Does it have to be signed, or you ever sent it all?
No, I just wanted your approval, it's a draft, I don't want to send anything out without you knowing what I'm doing. I'm not doing something like...
Everybody see it?
I make a motion, we approve the sending of the letter.
I'll second it.
Okay, any discussion?
Well, the discussion I'd have is it's just as soon as possible, please let me know, or let the board know what the, what the result is. Just as soon as possible.
I have certified mailing already, so I was, I was premature, I was hoping it was going to go in.
They're getting response back, right?
Yeah, because I just want to be able to set it in my schedule, I'm insane right now.
That's why I booked it out to July.
Yeah, nothing's helping me right now, maybe, maybe October, November.
I picked Wednesday because you said the seasons are good.
Yes, thank you.
I don't know if it works for everybody else, but I just kind of, it worked for you, Adam?
Any other discussion on it?
There's, we got baseball all the way up till September, so it's really, it's a crapshoot.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, can you get that out?
Aye.
Yep.
My Calhoun season's on in November, but I will be helping coach Bulldogs, which starts the week of July for it.
These plans?
Yes, although that is for the Oxford case, which I'm surprised, wait three months.
And what do we have to do, this is just our copy, does, you have to sign?
I mean, if you're not comfortable signing, I can wait till Mark gets back, it's up to you.
I don't have a problem signing it.
It's totally your call. So you want to sign the Mylar, not the paper?
Yep. And I should be vice chairman, right?
Yeah, you're going to have to write, I would write vice in front of the chair.
Yes, that's what I'm saying, write vice.
I wasn't touching it.
And you're free, it's Tamworth Kids.
And then I'll send it out.
There's no, there's no Tamworth minors team. Actually, they didn't have rookies team this year either, which is odd.
Today's the 5th.
But I didn't have any of their, it's on my rookies team, so.
I was going to say that and I said...
I do it, I do it.
I'm not going to do it, I'm going to shut up.
I do it all, I say it all day, all day.
I know, the, the...
Where, so we have material being delivered tomorrow.
I can't do it upside down, sorry.
Burke's going to be hauling in stuff tomorrow. And then as soon as we have it all here, we'll mix it, we'll release it, cover it.
Yep.
Put the roof down, it should be nice, but...
So that is in there.
It'll be better next season.
That's going to be in there, so you're good.
Okay.
And I checked to make sure that the release of covenant that I marked up for the attorney was on the... Might have to...
I'm going to fold this the opposite way because when you open a plan...
That's right.
So you can lay flat.
Yep. Well, I'm going to have to put it to this, I might even just drive it down and try to take it to the registry because that's going to be easier.
Right.
Thank you. All right, so I think that's it.
We were still really kind of in the middle of it all, but the numbers started to pick back up and pick back up.
Motion to adjourn?
Hold on, hold on.
I'll do my day, second by call.
Gosh, you guys are fast.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now we're up to, I think, seven or eight teams per level, so we have seven rookies.
Wasn't quick enough.
Well, I mean...
It's 21 teams.
I want 15, I'll take it.